So we're here tonight to continue having next steps in the referendum process. I want to thank everyone for being here and acknowledge, because it's not an easy process. In fact, that time planning is still a little painful, but nonetheless, I think everyone has really given a great deal of their time and effort to keep driving things for the best interest of our students and our community. Before we begin, I just wanted to ask board members if they had any lingering questions over the workshop that was held two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, we moved this one first. We held a workshop that delivered what I felt was extremely comprehensive recap of our 14-month process in the referendum. And copious content that, as we discussed, that were into decision-making. So I just wanted to make sure that if there were any questions that had arisen from that, that we could address them before we get again dealt into that part of our process. If not, just a reminder, that session was recorded and thank you, Kate. It is now linked to our website and appears on our YouTube page. It's two hours of great information that I would direct anyone to, to better understand what we have been delivering for the last year. So given that, I just wanted to kind of rehab why we are here and look forward. We challenged our teams at EWA and BJS to come up with a consolidation option that would deliver on a number of criteria. They had provided a number of options in the past, and this was yet one more ask of that team. We asked for a three thing specific. We asked for a renovation option that would bring all the kids under one roof. Secondly, we asked them to address student and school needs, not wants, needs, to avoid any volatility in the equation. We're getting at things that will enhance student and school safety and enhance the educational experience for our students. The third criteria was to provide those two, those two criteria points for us at a price point that would at least be tax tolerable to our community. So that's why we're here this evening and to kind of move forward with the board to try to determine our very next step. So I'm going to turn the program over.
Thank you, Kim. I'm Conrad Barner. I'm the superintendent. For those of you who don't know me, school board members are pretty much over on that side of the room. On our consultants from Epstein, UN Architects and BJS Construction are on this side of the room. If you speak to, please just introduce yourselves when you get a chance so people in the audience know who you are. So thanks to everybody for being here this evening. We've got a lot of information to present to people. Here's our agenda as just a quick overview. We'll start with a quick recap on why we would ask the board to consider going back out to referendum in April. And we got it revised and reduced. We would have said significantly revised and reduced, but it wouldn't fit on one line. But it is a pretty dramatic reduction. Preliminary option, all of this is preliminary. You'll see that word repeatedly there because this was really all up to the board to make the decision if they wanted to give us permission to move forward. And then the discussion at the end of the presentation, certainly if you have questions during board, don't hesitate to ask. So quickly on the recap, why would we go back to the voters? Obviously, the new high school was not approved on November 5th. However, our community feedback through all of the information sessions that we did for 14 months, along with the survey results, did indicate that there is a strong desire to see Arrowhead under one roof. I mean, that absolutely came through loud and clear in all of our information sessions and the survey. The key, though, there was no number attached to it. You know, the support for a concept is one thing, support for a concept with a number attached to it is a totally different thing. And so what we basically learned is the threshold, the tolerance level to get under one roof for 260 million does not exist in the community. So now the question would be, what is a satisfactory number to get everybody under one roof? And our facilities problems are not going away, and that's another reason why we need to return to the voters.
We've shown this slide numerous times, going back to January of this year. And these are the overall key takeaways from the facility assessment that occurred late fall, early winter of and it includes a lack of secure entries. I'm not going to read all these to you for pickup, drop off. There are site-related aspects, educational adequacy-related aspects, and then conditions here that are represented. Now, all of these takeaways from the facility study can be handled in a number of different ways. We did take those, those takeaways and we did prioritize those early last year, early this year, rather, sorry. And the consolidation options there are on the right-hand side of this graph, range from adding on, keeping an existing building and adding on to that existing building, or building a brand-new high school. So big ideas five, six, and seven are all ways that we can consolidate under one roof. We heard the community, they said, no, we do not want a new high school, which was big idea seven there, pink and purple on the right-hand side. So when Kim charged us on the team, hey, what can we do to still consolidate? We moved all the way over to the left-hand side of this graph, all still consolidating, still getting under one roof, which was big idea five. It's small textbook for those that are in the back. It says, take south offline, renovate current north building and add on to it. As you can see, even that option still checks a lot of the boxes indicated on the left-hand side. Again, those are, I'm not going to read them all, lack of secure entries, inefficiency of two separate buildings, undersized classrooms are prioritized based on the order of priority that we were told from those community information sessions earlier this year. And again, a lot, none of those boxes are red, most of them are green, and the major partially, some of those are even yeses. Here are the options that Kate is going to be sharing shortly.
All right. So how do we consolidate buildings when you are adding on to an existing building and replacing program that is displaced from taking south offline? So as a reminder, a driver, major driver for consolidation is the inefficiency of these two buildings and repeated program that exists both at north and south. So highlighted in colors are all the programs that have representation at both the north campus and the south campus, including programs like the cafeteria, the library, the gym, art, health, music, tech ed, et cetera. So it's not as simple as just picking up south and adding it on to north. Some of these programs need to be combined in a way because while they are inefficient and duplicated, it's not exactly 50% of that program is needed and we can just abandon what's left at south and add on to north the remaining program. So that is one thing to consider as we have developed options. So the other things that we're doing as a part of this consolidation option is combining the main entrance and administrative program, so uniting all staff and admin team in one place at a secure entry for students. We're looking to eliminate the duplication of all of those programs, as I mentioned, by combining programs such as tech ed and faith and music into one area. We're looking to provide a FIAED space to replace what will be lost at south. That's the FIAED spaces at south currently are used by over 10 teams, clubs, and activities. So we're going to replace that program with a multi-purpose facility that will meet that demand and need from the south campus now at the north campus. And then we're going to provide a classroom addition that accommodates all the displaced classrooms at south and add them on to north. While we're doing all this in the building, we're going to address the site issues. So we're now going to basically take a lot of traffic and cars and parking that are currently occupied at south and add them to north. So we already have, you know, we already, there already is a traffic congestion, pickup and drop-off issues at north, and you're going to increase the demand in terms of cars. We have to be really careful about how we design the site to minimize congestion and queuing, separate vindicular traffic from bus pickup and drop-off, et cetera. So really consider how the site circulation works now that there's an increased demand in a consolidated area. And then last but not least, we know because we are driving at, trying to get to the lowest possible cost, that we will not be able to address all of the issues mentioned in the facility study with this singular solution in this state. So all, as we design things, always we want to keep the future in mind. And so where there might be future additions or renovations, we want to consider kind of a long-term master plan of the site so that we're, everything that we're doing now won't prohibit the need of future. All right. So I'm going to walk you through this consolidated option. First, I'm going to call your attention to the legend on the left. What's indicated in orange is new construction, so additions. What's indicated in blue is heavy renovation. First, I'm going to talk through the site implications, and then I'll dive into the building. So the first thing we're going to do with the site is take the current it's not
Saw it down there.
I know, I saw it down there, but it's not.
Sometimes the screens, sometimes these screens don't like the laser light for some reason.
I'll get them in. Okay. So the south end of the site, you can see here where the current parent drop-off is located. We're going to extend the drop-off to contain two parent and drop-off lanes and move all bus drop-off and student parking to the north. So we're completely separating parents who are dropping off younger ninth and 10th graders to the south and students who are parking on their own to the north along with bus drop-off. So we'll have two separate student entries. The current office, as a result, will become the district office. So there's a student entry to the south, but it is being managed and overseen by the district office that is there. And then the north area currently where the, roughly where the art rooms are, will become a new main office for the consolidated both admin staff from south and north combined at that entry. There will be one-third entry to the left here for community members only, and I'll get into that when I get into the design of the kind of added PE space. So that's the admin consolidation piece. We are taking the current cafeteria in the middle here and expanding it into the library so that we can accommodate all students from south and north in one cafeteria space. We are then creating a new library in the middle of the building over towards the east here to accommodate the north and south consolidated libraries. So it's a little bit larger than the current north one. We're then renovating some spaces around that to accommodate face, which is primarily exists at south. So it needs to combine with the few face classrooms that exist at north. And then some minor renovations to tech ed to address some displaced space where the office is being renovated. All other programs, such as the program that's being taken over by this renovation and the program being displaced at north, will be combined in a new two-story classroom addition to the east.
To the south, being displaced from south.
Being displaced from south, sorry, to the east here in this classroom, two-story classroom addition. And then all of the FIAED spaces that are being displaced from south will be located in a new indoor multi-purpose facility that is immediately north of the current west gym. The pool, we're looking at doing a expansion, a renovation and expansion, where we are expanding the current vessel to an eight-lane competition pool in the place of the current six-lane one. It will then, it will be renovated to be deep enough for diving, so those programs can happen in the same vessel, but not a separate diving well. So it's a small addition and a primary, primarily a renovation of that space. And then renovating the current weight room to accommodate additional lockers that will be required to pick up some of the lockers that are at south currently. I mentioned the piece about planning for the future. At this point, it has been, to get the costs down as low as possible, the auditorium has been put on the back burner for future work. And so we're kind of identifying a rough area where that would go should the district decide to pursue a future referendum or something to accommodate a larger auditorium. So that's not being addressed as a part of this project, but identifying kind of on the master plan where that might go so that we're not building something now that would get in the way of something, doing something for the future. We are expand, like I mentioned, the students' parking space. We are kind of creating another parking lot for community and event space to accommodate the demand there with some of the increase for footage at north. And then the south site, so this is looking at the south campus diagram, remains relatively similar to what was proposed as a part of the previous referendum in that we are doing some, proposing some modifications to the current drive to move the tennis court over for safety purposes, so students aren't crossing back and forth across that. And then taking over the area where south previously was, so you can see the outline and the dashed, to accommodate the fields that are displaced when the new parking lot and additions are built. So the work at south is relatively similar to what was proposed, proposed previously.
Katie, can you punctuate the white area of the plan as well, for your slide?
Yes. So all of the white area indicated in the existing north building is untouched space. So you can see the percentage, relatively speaking, of what's being touched at north and renovated. The rest that's indicated in white or the light gray is not being touched. So all of those classrooms, the science area, some of the smaller classrooms along the eastern edge, none of those are being touched or addressed at this point.
So we put together ranges of cost for this option. As you go down the list, you can start with the heavy renovation. Those are all the areas that Kate talked about. We did this to segregate the different areas to help make it easier to come up with the cost for the project, but also for everybody to understand this. The next one down, the building addition, that is purely the classroom addition off the east side of the building. The indoor multi-purpose facility, we broke that apart, so you can see all of that. The site itself, going all the way from south, all the way up to K, everything from east to west, all inclusive of that. The pool itself, the small addition, the pool work inside the pool space. And then everybody's seen the breakdown that they produced from the last referendum, raising site restoration itself itself. So we broke all of that down, and we've come to a range right now between 137 and 122 million dollars. We started with a range because there's so many things that needs to happen there before we go a number that could go out.
So, you know, one question that we wanted to answer in black and white terms was what has changed? How did we go from the November 5th solution that was on the ballot to where we are today? What's different? The biggest difference, if you've been paying attention, folks here, is that we are not building a new building. The taxpayers said no, but we are keeping north campus and we're putting an addition on to it, several additions here and there, and doing a portion of heavy renovations inside the existing building. A portion, as Katie, as I asked Katie to point that out, the white area on the plan is not being touched. We also removed the auditorium scope. We are no longer doing a new, large, higher-capacity auditorium. We are keeping the existing auditorium as is, again, it was not white area of the plan. We are renovating and enlarging the pool. Katie rushed over it. There is an addition that is proposed on the plan to the high school here. You can make that out here on the north side to accommodate that extra lane capacity. We previously had a separate diving well as a part of the November 5th solution. We have since removed that, and in the plan that we're presenting to all of you tonight, that diving well is shared in the lane, in the lanes of the vessel, okay? So there's going to be a deeper spot to accommodate that diving well in that rectangular pool. We had previously shown an Arrowhead Drive extension that is removed in this plan. And we have also removed long-term capital maintenance for the existing spaces that were not touching for north campus. So the spaces that were heavily renovating, like the pool, for example, was a big chunk of that capital maintenance, is just being handled by nature of the renovation. I think we'll get on a slide here shortly, there's another substantial chunk of capital maintenance per cell that is being removed, right? Because we don't need maintenance, we're tearing down, right? So I think Ryan's going to talk about that here momentarily.
So there's been a lot of wheels in motion. We didn't have actual cost numbers. So we said at a previous meeting, let's see, what would it cost for a tax impact? 130 million, 135, and 140 million. So when the cost came back, we just found out what to pay, at the 136 to 142, or 137, 142 range. We're just showing the two ranges here. At 135 million, it'd be a dollar one on the tax rate. And at 140,000, a dollar five on the tax rate.
140 million.
Sorry, 140 million.
These are the numbers for people in the back who can't quite see them. Dollar one for 135 million, dollar five for 140 million, just estimates at this point.
This is a hypothetical financing plan here. It assumes several things. It's a 20-year borrow. It would assume that it would be a 20-year borrow. The mill rate is using this year's equalized property value of 9.95 billion dollar worth of property value. And it's increasing that property value by one and a half percent each year of the borrowing. And that's to accommodate for a new growth that would happen in this district. It's using interest rates of four and a quarter to four and a half percent. And it's also factoring in the aid impact because we're negatively aided at the tertiary or the third level of the formula. It's factoring in a loss of aid of $900,000 every other year. So that's all factored into these tax impact numbers. So this is really the maximum the tax rate would ever be. In fact, every year of the borrowing, that rate would go down based on the equalized property value growing up over time. So the maximum rates are 101 for 135 million and 105 for 140 million. And if you extrapolate out to, you can get 137 would be probably around 102, and 142 would be around 107. It's about three fourths of a penny on the tax rate for every million dollars between 135 and 142. That loss would stay, is that a real number though? No, and it likely wouldn't be 900,000 because you can only lose a maximum 15% in one year. And Why would we put that in there every other year? It's just an assumption. It's too hard to Do you have to put that in there? It's going to impact rate a little bit just because your aid will go down every other year. I mean, if we didn't manage it, it could be made up in here. Right? The second year, we could come back and regain some of it. So it's a very conservative estimate. This is worst-case maximum potential estimate on the tax rate. Very conservative estimate. Likely would come in slightly under this, but rather than have surprises on the other way, happy surprises coming in under it. And that's only attributed to the debt service, so this would be paying off the debt related to this renovation type project.
But a small loss in aid is really a red herring. Like you're getting a referendum passed, the community's saying, we want this. You're getting all those funds through that project, the, any aid impacts, it's just part of how the state formula works.
Exactly. We get, to put it in perspective, we have a $30 million annual budget. This would be outside of that, the debt service would be outside of that annual budget. But our aid right now is about five and a half million dollars. So the tax levy is about $18 million right now. And the rest of it comes through student fees, aid and seats, student income, some of those are revenues. Five million dollars on a $30 million budget is a tax impact, or I'm sorry, the aid. The amount of state aid that we get, and that would likely come down. Probably just under 900,000, maybe 900, because staying on the upper edge of it, it'd be 850,000 or 865,000 in that first year. But then in year two, we'd like to go back up in aid. And then in year four, we come back down, you know, every other year. And we would stack the debt payments in that way to be able to reduce the loss of aid over time. Which doesn't help us on an operating same way, but it does help save tax dollars, helps the taxpayers. Just by managing that aid formula, we're not helping ourselves on the operational side, I wish we could. But it does help taxpayers. Of course, we're going to do that.
Can you talk a little bit about the diving well and how that's going to be integrated into one of the lanes? Is it something that we would potentially be able to host at our school? The best example, I could compare is Greenfield. When I was at Greenfield, that was the cool project that they did. So you've got all your lanes for the racing, and one end is deeper than the other one so that you can actually do diving on that end of it. So it's not a separate thing. It's the most efficient way to do it. You just can't do it at the same time, obviously. We don't want divers dodging racers. But it's a, it's compromised. It's not ideal. It's not what we would love to have, but it still gets us a lot better than what we have right now.
Katie, can you speak to the new construction? Probably classrooms, what type of space we would pick up? Brand or beyond the courtyard?
Yep, yep. So there's about, that's the number here. There's about 50 classrooms in that new in, sorry, in the new, in the new addition, there's 64 new classrooms. In the heavy renovation piece, there's about five new classrooms being created. So relative to the total number of classrooms, which is 103, that will be the result of existing classrooms plus new plus renovated. That's a significant percentage of the classrooms. 69 renovated, 65 new, 64 new, five renovated, and 35 existing.
And just imagining, given we're talking about a courtyard on one side and the edge of that is external, lots of windows.
Oh, yeah. We would ensure that all classrooms are dated. Yep. So let's go back to the diagram for a second so I can just talk to something. So we've intentionally separated the new addition from the existing building. And that is because if we were to build immediately all against the existing building, we would then remove all daylight from any of that exterior, any of those exterior spaces. So we've intentionally created a courtyard space between the two so that everything in the existing building maintains its current windows and daylight condition. And then all of the new spaces have additional daylight coming in. And so while we're currently showing, you know, let's see shades similar to then what we showed in the $261 million option, likely it won't be that shape. There might be ins and outs here and there. The shape will be developed as we work through design with the admin team, but we'd ensure that all instructional spaces have daylight. And to that point as well, you know, where the library is currently positioned, the new, the library, renovated library, there's some existing skylight conditions we'd be taking advantage of. And we look for opportunities to integrate daylight into those larger spaces overhead so that they, that the spaces below and adjacent to them can take advantage of that daylighting condition. So you're kind of getting a lot of bang for your buck from a daylighting standpoint. You're lighting the space immediately below, like the cafeteria or the library. But then if we integrate glass into those existing classrooms, they're getting some benefit from some indirect daylight. So we would look for efficient strategy like that to incorporate within the existing building to supplement some daylighting where a classroom doesn't have exterior walls to daylight it.
Question for you on the courtyard on the south side. Those two lines right there, is that a secured entrance? Or is that open to the public?
It's secure. So the intent is that there would be a covered walkway with a secure gate. So the intent there is
To a good program outside and still be within the school grounds and its control.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we can get equipment in there.
Because we, we have outdoor programming space like that now that's controlled.
Yeah. There's one, there's one courtyard at south currently, but my understanding it's not used for outdoor classrooms. So that would be, the new one would be intentionally
That's what it looked like, and I just, I wanted to make sure that if that wasn't considered, that
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
As long as they're on that side, can I just quick touch on a couple things?
Sure. I just wanted to ask one thing related to this. Sure. I just wanted to ask one thing related to this. If I remember correctly, North Campus had at twenty percent.
Yep.
Of our classrooms at some direct lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know where we jump onto them even approximately?
Um, I, I would feel more comfortable getting back to you on that number, but at least the classrooms that we're renovating and the new classrooms. So around sixty-nine out of a hundred and three would then have access to daylight. At a minimum, the sixty-four, the five probably indirect daylighting, and then the thirty-five that we aren't touching. Um, there may be some ancillary ones that have some, some benefit from it. We might have to look into that, but we can get back to you on that number at the next.
Can I just, is this all one story or are there two stories in here or?
Two stories for the classroom additions, one story for the other.
Yep. The new, the new addition, the new addition is two-story. So all the orange over here. And then, uh, this facility would also be more than a single story because it's athletics.
Do you know roughly the square footage of what we're losing from south classrooms and what we'd be gaining from the addition?
Um, the addition is around, the classroom addition itself is like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. We total so around sixty-some, um, on each level. Uh, I don't know the exact square footage of the existing classrooms. We are, we do have a net reduction in total classroom square footage because we are taking advantage of, um, we're no longer duplicating. So, so for example, you know, music, we aren't actually gaining, we're, we're, we're just using work. Um, so south is, comes offline, we're just using the, the music space. Um, things like, uh, face, um, there are two classrooms at north and there's several at south. We're combining them and there's a reduced total number. I think it's, uh, over total, uh, that if needed. So in some case, it, it depends on what the demand is from the admin team and how well utilized those spaces are. But those overall, you look at the total number of classrooms, we're going from, uh, like a hundred and fourteen, I think, to a hundred and three total instructional spaces. So a net reduction is for both the classroom space.
Yeah, that would be then. So what would the student experience be like when they do renovation? Definitely. What, what does that kind of look like during construction or at?
Can we, can we do that on the timeline that Charlie's got?
Going to cover that, but I'm all about the student experience. So I just wanted to see what's been happening.
Let's hit the timeline. Can we stay on that window that we were on for a second? Oh, yeah. Because we didn't get to the timeline yet. Um, and we just all have to be very transparent. It's not going to be ideal. It, you know, it's not like it would have been with the other proposal, but we'll still do everything we can to manage it. Most likely keeps out going as long as possible again, so that they can do the renovation in the meantime.
So we would still give the students walking, I mean, it would function still at the two cameras until?
Till North is ready.
Okay.
Am I saying that right? So I just want everybody to understand, this proposal is a balancing act of what's the least costly way to get under one roof. But also have some logic, you know, you don't just, you wouldn't just throw everybody into north and say, okay, now we're going to operate and we've got this new wing. It would just be chaotic. If you think about it, you got to get a bigger cafeteria because you're moving all the kids under one roof. So you've got to do something with cafeteria. So that's why that gets expanded. Um, expanding the pool, that's another one. It makes a lot of sense. Main office, you want to have your main office as close to your academics and also extracurriculars as possible. So by putting it over on this side of the building, this kind of creates a new front of the school. And you want your office right by where you're going to have your secure entry point and close to all these academics and close to the library. It just makes a lot of sense that you would have your school main office located in that proximity to everything else that's going on, also very close to cafeteria. The district office then becomes kind of your backup, backdoor security, secure entrance. And so you have admin presence on both sides of the building this way, but this is kind of more disjointed, farther away from all of these other academic things. We're going to be tucked back in this little corner here. So that's nothing new. And then same with tech ed and face, we got to combine that space. You wouldn't just put some face classes over here and some over here and some over here. You want to get it logical. You want to have some order. You want to have some consistency. So the student experience is seamless. And so this, this is it. Like this is how you can do it with the least amount of money, but get a very logical new one building facility.
I'm going to advance to the timeline. Slide here. Okay. So we've shown previous iterations of this timeline, all of them commenced, um, theoretically on November fifth. Of course, this was, this was, um, prior to November fifth, um, with the referendum potentially being rescheduled on April first. Um, this is the preliminary timeline that we would foresee for the project that we just showed. Um, so if, um, if a referendum gets, gets voted on and if it ends up on the ballot, if it gets approved, um, design, architectural design would commence, um, immediately. Um, and, and as I mentioned at the last workshop, the financial investment to pay an architect to, to develop drawings and design for that is enormous. That is why we don't start that until we know for sure the taxpayers want to pay for it. Um, so it would start in April. Um, an interesting wrinkle, um, part of an April referendum is that during the first six months of design, it's heavy engagements with, with the administration, with program lead, the curriculum, with the teachers. And it happens to overlap summer. So I want to make sure that it's understood that during the summer of twenty twenty-five, we will be asking for teacher input. We don't design buildings. We don't have buildings pre-designed on the shelf. We just take off and slap on Arrowhead's campus. We let the teachers inform that process. We emphasize that. That's, I mean, that's just natural part of our process. Um, and that design would continue through autumn, spring and summer. We would start, let me turn over here to you in a second. We would start issuing, um, we call them bid packages. Uh, sections of the building that can get start getting built and bid sooner. So BJS won't be waiting until the summer of twenty twenty-six for their first document package. They'll be getting their first one in January, February of, of twenty-six.
Yep. Uh, so first time I can start with it, that doesn't know means the whole, the basis is in here. So project executive from BJS. So, um, how that kind of works, uh, as Charlie alluded to, there'd be like over like three bid packages. So as, as the design is kind of finishing up, uh, we're going to, you know, start, uh, bidding all portions of the work. So we're going to get the first big package in the first part of twenty twenty-six to allow us to start, um, construction of the new additions in the spring of twenty twenty-six. So the phase one of where we're going to start is actually in the, in the, uh, new additions, uh, new addition of parts of the building. So north is alive and south campuses are both alive, act, acting as they are. And then we're going to separate, it's going to be a multi-phase project. So we're going to separate the addition, construction aspects of it, uh, to the, uh, to, you know, to the, uh, existing schools. So that's going to start in the spring of twenty-six and then we're going to finish up, uh, in the, uh, in the summer of twenty-seven with the additions. At that time, they'll be, uh, the, the students will go over into the new addition, the classroom addition. So the big center section of the building of the blue section, heavy renovation, we're going to start dating over portions of that. We haven't figured out like all the, you know, all, all the ins and outs of it yet because, you know, we haven't brought the whole team together. But, but that's going to be part of our, our planning processes that, uh, that, that Conrad alluded to, uh. It's going to be messy, but we're going to try to minimize the destruction as much as possible. Um, so, so the additions are done in the summer of twenty-seven and then we're going to start the renovations, um, starting in, you know, in the fall of twenty-seven, through the summer of twenty-eight. Um, and, and, and both campuses are still, are still on, on, online. Um, and we're showing the, the construction going to the, to the end of twenty-eight. What that looks like is, uh, once the, the students are, are out of the south campus, we're going to start doing that, uh, grazing and, and deconstruction of the south campus. And then start doing the site development there. We are still indicating a potential of some work during the summer of twenty-nine, just depending upon how the phasing, phasing works out, uh, with, uh, uh, with the heavy renovation, uh, the, uh, heavy renovation portions of, of the building.
That's present. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, so the advantage of Arrowhead's current site composition is that you do have a whole south campus to be utilized while construction is undergoing. So BJS's plan is to keep south online for as long as possible while renovation is occurring. So consolidation fully won't happen until everything is done. Um, but you do have that additional resource to utilize and minimize the disruption on students. No one is promising that students aren't going to be disrupted. That was part of the reason why the admin team, the board selected the new building in the first place. It's because that minimized the student experience, um, to the utmost degree where in renovations, situations are always disruptive on students to some degree. And we will do our best as a designer, construction team to fade it, um, such that it minimizes it as much as possible, given the additional resource of south.
Other districts, Lindsay, I mean, yes, there's the, there's the experience of, of a student walking through a renovated school or, sorry, walking through a school under heavy renovations. But you could also have these opportunities for like the graduating senior class, say, and the class of, of twenty-seven. Before they leave for the summer, we, we're going to demo the library. They can go in there and they can start knocking walls down or whatever. The safety issue are whatever, but you could make it a fun kind of school spirit experience for them. That's just why we, uh, it doesn't have to be this. I mean, this, I mean, this is, this is BJS here. It's going to be construction, there are results, there's going to be safety, there's going to be protocols, policies in place to protect students. Yeah, it can be physical barriers, so which are walls. We have the temporary walls over there, fully wall, drywall, by this separate from obstruction. So. Excellent.
So just a few of the highlights with this proposal so that everybody is on the same page. A major point is that this is responsive to the community and voter feedback. We spent over a year getting feedback from the community, got all those survey results. We had the referendum. The community has told the board, this is what we're looking at. This is what we're okay. This is what we're not okay. This is what we want. This proposal really takes into consideration everything the community has told us so far. It also reduces the project cost by anywhere from a hundred and nineteen to a hundred and twenty-four million. I'll say that again. This is a hundred and nineteen to a hundred and twenty-four million less than what went out in November. That is not insignificant. That is a huge, huge reduction in costs, almost half. Um, reduces the estimated tax impact by anywhere from eighty-four cents to eighty-nine cents. And again, some of these numbers could change a little bit, but again, a dramatic reduction from the dollar ninety-one. Um, we do get under one building, which that's going to improve safety, gives much better instructional spaces and it, the efficiencies. We probably won't realize the full million dollars in inefficiency because that would have happened if we had one new building. But it'll be a significant, if I had to ballpark, I'll say anywhere around three quarters of a million in savings. But we're still going to have the old building with the old rooftop systems. Those aren't going away. So it's not going to be the same. Um, and we avoid spending seventeen point six million in capital maintenance at south campus. So very significant highlights to this proposal.
Might be too early to ask, but want to talk about minimizing disruptions. I don't know if you can, and maybe this is too early to ask, but the pool, if you build on the pool, you can't minimize that. Was there been any discussion, well, we'll do this, that. Because if you take out a pool, you can't swim in.
You're a hundred percent correct. The pool will be down. That's the only one that I can see. Time that students will, or the swimmers will have to go somewhere else somehow, some way. But I would have those like, which we understand is not easy. It can be very, very challenging, but yes, that will be the one element that's holding it down and not just. So there, there been any?
I would suggest, I mean, it kind of predates being on a board.
Almost everything predates.
But our board has not, do without the challenges on the school, uh, pool beginning. Um, and which were certainly the challenge of that, although it's out of all members on this one. The pool at times has been down and, uh, our, I think, we would orchestrate arrangements elsewhere for the students to try and suit their needs temporarily. Uh, we've had all kinds of ongoing vacants that have caused to itself. And so again, it's at some level, it's not an unusual challenge of swimming pools. Because the end is the cross.
Yep. And that's exactly what would happen. Um, Brian May and our athletic director would be reaching out to area districts and say, is there some kind of arrangement we can work out? Where we can rent your space and use your pool after your teams are done type of thing. Yeah, it's tough. Did you do that in deep there?
Yep. Is there a rough number for that?
Couldn't, I wouldn't try to estimate anything at this point. Yeah, but we can, we would start working on that as soon as we know that we're going to keep moving forward.
That just, I'm curious. Have you had preliminary discussions?
Unless Ryan has them, we just didn't talk to him about it, but I doubt it.
Thank you.
Um, so with this plan, are you not touching auditorium at all?
We're not touching auditorium. We were tasked to stay laser focused on consolidating under one million of the lowest possible. Because Conrad earlier pointed out being as functional as possible.
And part of the reasoning was unlike the pool, the auditorium is going to fail on us where we literally don't have that space. We can, we can keep getting eye with it. Unlike the pool, when that's gone, now we've got a curriculum issue, we got extracurricular issue. So that was the reason that we felt we still wanted to do something with pool as part of this project.
We'd be highlighting and have the best possible, you know, the updates and pretty, like that in our, um, internet and all that kind of stuff.
We can look at everything. If there's something that's solid, all that, all work in construction of the addition, but right now we can't determine. Well, we, we had discussed it, but there's no way for us to work with a pinpoint. Obviously, well, then, then the, the cost right now, you know, high level costs that we talked about a couple of times, how to develop. I can't just go and pick off one way, or else access point in time and reduce the price by that. And what they do becomes very difficult.
So sorry, knowing the money we spend on this building, some of the base upgrades, safety, the doors, the locks that we all have. Or handles or, um, game or like that, just.
I think there will be tech ed equipment, very highly expensive and a good thing to reutilize, um, at North Campus in, in newer spaces. So I, I think there will be a thorough investigation of one equipment immediately over.
Probably one of the older departments, National Library. Certainly. I don't know. They just done this. So it may be a day.
Yeah, I, I know. I was just impressed that they have this information to provide.
You know, we shouldn't destroy everything here whenever we come, so yeah. Clear. I think that's probably the thing.
Yeah, to give you, to give you some assurances here, this, we do that all the time with a lot of our public school district clients. And that process takes eight months to coordinate every single piece of equipment. To leave no stone unturned. It would be foolish to be drawing things that are working more away. Especially if they can even be put on a shelf for attic stock so that when that other one breaks, we can use that one over there.
Then I have another thought. This is coming way upfield, but I was just wondering, you know, we talked about the pool and auditorium forever. And what if you made the south campus the pool and auditorium area and just all classrooms and that at north? I, I'm sure the cost would be a bit more than what we're seeing tonight, but it wouldn't have to be done right away though. Going into the city here until another referendum or just make this like an arts, I mean, athletic center. I don't know. I just. That's a pretty talented idea. Issue of safety, you guys are saving, saving to be building. So you have people back to sell you.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I was thinking it would be totally separate, like the, oh, Kanawha has their art center. That's their, you know, what they put on place and what community uses it also. And this could be more of a community, community pool, community auditorium. But we wouldn't have to destroy it though. We would just renovate it to make a whole auditorium.
We need this, we need this space.
Renovation though, I wouldn't that be destructive as we have.
Yeah, we wouldn't have.
Well, that's it. I, I guess the premise is different than what we were just asked.
Yeah, I know. It was just something I thought and I thought I just mentioned it.
I think also what's challenging about that is fundamentally renovating this building to be a pool and auditorium. You have to look for, um, spaces like the current south gym might be a good candidate to build into the auditorium because it's a high volume, column free space, for example, but it's. But it's in the middle of the building, so what are you doing with the rest of the building surrounding it? I, I'd imagine that if we were to investigate options of putting those things here, it would be cost prohibitive and not worth investigating. Um, we'd be better off just building a new addition onto north and then those spaces are contiguous from a functional standpoint and then utilizing the current south building for, um, fields where it's adjacent to other fields.
And again, I think from a perspective of, of the ultimate goal being consolidation, everything under one roof. We are capturing, uh, some of those athletic facilities on the same route.
And I think renovating this pool is going to be so much more cost effective than doing another pool over here. Like, like you basically started from scratch to build a pool here, so that's going to be really expensive. And renovating the existing auditorium, again, would be much cheaper than trying to do something here. I mean, it's going to be basically doing a new auditorium here also. So I, I just, I think this proposal is absolutely the most cost effective thing we can do to get under one roof.
So the future auditorium is kind of an offshoot of the existing one as well?
It's just, it's not even, it's not, it's not even, I, I was, I forgot to ask to take it off this plan, actually, because I don't even think we should be showing it because it's purely a hypothetical thing that if you wanted to do something with auditorium, the footprint is there. But that, you could do a whole new auditorium, you could renovate the existing auditorium. That is like not even part of this conversation. So I really would want us to try to focus on down the road in the future, if we wanted, and the community said it's okay. There, there's space for it there, but yeah, I don't, I don't want to distract from the fact that there is, I don't want anybody to come out of this room thinking there's another auditorium on the, on the table, it is not.
I'm, I'm actually glad you added it just so we have the, the discussion point and the, the point of reference for potential for the future. And for tonight, I, I'm fine with that. If this moves forward, though, I would recommend that we don't even include it in any, I know we put out this whole cause confusion.
I think, you know, there's always questions of why did you, why did you put this addition where you located it? And north is actually very complicated to add on to. Looked at several options around the full three sixty, um, perimeter of the building. And locating it where we intentionally avoided kind of where the future auditorium is indicated just to leave, leave that open in case the district decides to do a auditorium. It would make sense to locate that near the adjacent, uh, finer spaces or where the existing auditorium is. Um, so avoiding that for current additions to not provide it.
Here's your proofing of plan.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I had a question of the design phase, if we can go back to that slide. Um, so with regards to the heavy engagement from the admins and teachers, um, my request as a singular board member is also to reach out to, um, teachers in districts that have, have done referendums in the past. I, I recently, uh, had a very anecdotal, just off the cuff, uh, discussion with a teacher from Verona, uh, who had mentioned it, again, it's just one, one teacher and it's anecdotal, and she said it's, there are multiple teachers that feel the way she does. That she was, she wishes that it could be like it used to be. And because a lot of the classrooms are too small, a lot of the, some of the open spaces, uh, she said conceptually, it's great to think like, you know, like a college campus, but these are still high school kids already using some, you know. So I just, I'd like to, one, i- i- if everything came to fruition here, I'd really challenge your team and our team to go back to some of those districts that have passed things and really talk to some of the teachers that are working in them to make sure that there are not things that, you know, couldn't be different here. Uh, because the worst, worst case scenario in my head would be, okay, we do all this and then the teachers, you know, I talk to teachers and they're like, gosh, I wish we would have done it this way, or wish we, you know, I love the fact that there's going to be heavy engagement, that's great. But we should also talk to other districts to see what, what isn't working with your new design. What is, what is great, you know, let's, let's figure out, you know, best practices, best, you know, opportunities for, for us. There's some question about the cost of something like this. How about looking at what we'll be able to get. For some cost assumption that go on the, the campus.
Or the, moving forward with the referendum?
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly. Really something definitely get this, how about with each, are we going to get a review? And really the cost per square foot, that really is a part.
So as we move forward, this will not be ranges. It'd be a number, we saw those there, and they will have a square subjugates associated with it. Tell you the cost before, from there. Some of that, in depth of detail, it's all based on, um, as much information as we're going to try and develop prior to, you know, um, settle. So it doesn't allow us a lot of time through now, like in January twenty, to get down to every nail in the board block, it doesn't need to slow. But there's going to be information behind it that's.
To get, to go deeper than this, Brandon, we don't get much deeper than this on other school referenda. Simply because it hamstrings the school district, makes our school, it starts to make subcontractor bidding less competitive. Because then the entire subcontractor market starts to see, oh, that's the number they were carrying for me three. Well, I could have done it for less, but that's what they're buying, so we're going to bid that number. We don't, we don't, we advise districts against getting much more detailed than this.
Yeah, I guess it would be nice to benchmark when actual construction costs come in at recent schools. Just to understand where the offer might be and where the upside might be as well. Your, your kind of thing, the first floor of having a lot of detail, I'm going to tell. Might help us to give a little more detail as possible, Ken, but I understand your concern. I'm going to be tough.
And just to kind of give you some assurances, if you look at all the referenda that passed in, um, November and look at their referendum website, you will find that you, this is more, a lot more information than many of those districts shared outwardly. Um, this is very common, very typical, um, because of the reasons that Charlie shared and both regarding the cost and why we don't design the building, you know, there's not, the, the costs are based on historical data within the market. Um, some preliminary assumptions, but not based on a design, you know, it's based on a square footage cost. And so, um, and that is obviously all very intentional because the, the district would not want to invest in the fees required to design it to give them enough information to get a hard bid associated with it.
How treated is proprietary information?
What would that be treated as proprietary information?
Where the, where the board on?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think it'll get a record to question would be my guess. I don't know what basis we would have, just say, no, I mean, I guess if it's yours, if it's yours.
It would be very similar, it would be very similar to try to find for this town. And we'll go into a closed session if we were to discuss how much we want to sell. We don't want to spoil our hand in terms of cost. We got that kind of interest that they just pointed out.
Yeah, I don't know, I've just been a little nervous, we, we finally want to check into that. I, I would, I would present another perspective. Twenty-four thousand people voted. Did we have maybe four hundred people come to the different sessions total of all the presentations? I mean, you're talking less than two percent of people that actually saw a presentation. I don't, while a few people may have criticized us that there wasn't enough detail, to Katie's point, I've never been a part of a referendum that got more detail than what we provided to people. I don't think that's what killed it. It was a two hundred and sixty-one million dollar ask, it was the most expensive high school ever asked for, it had a high tax impact. I think that's what killed it more than anything, by far more than anything. And so coming back, you know, cutting off almost a hundred and thirty million off the project. We, that's the lowest we can get under one roof, we'll find out if the taxpayers support that. And if they don't, then we know we're going to have two buildings for the foreseeable future because there's no other way to get under one roof than this option.
I disagree with that. I don't think there was enough information here.
Well, we've been criticized for too much, we've been criticized for mailing too much stuff, wasting money on postage, sending all this information. I'm just telling you, we sent out four flyers to the entire community. Yeah, well, you, I can tell you are in the minority because we have heard the exact opposite from so many people. Let us know what your, let us know, yeah, let us know what your address is. I know there was one mail.
Both just in melee, and I don't know, for any people I asked, all three said they didn't, and I went to different areas. You only got a seventeen percent response back. You're going to tell me the wealthy people that are business owners in this district aren't going to respond back until we've got the highest paying taxes in the area on, on our home?
Seventeen, seventeen percent is actually, seventeen percent is a good return on a survey.
The, uh, meeting is for, for the workshop, not a full discussion. Just bring it back in.
Were there, were there any other, any other questions? I, I, taxpayers don't matter.
We're literally, literally listening.
No. About sixty percent. So maxed out on our property taxes right now. And one of the biggest reasons why the taxpayers don't want to catch your referendos is because you guys built such an enormous, gargantuan locker room for the basketballs.
It's not, it's not gargantuan, it's tiny. Those locker rooms are tiny, have you seen them?
Half of the money was supposed to go towards fixing what was already there.
You have all your information's wrong, everything you're saying is wrong.
They were so fancy.
Everything's wrong, it was donated money.
They were models.
No. Everything you're saying is wrong. Please reach out to me and we can meet and I'll show you everything and explain it. Please reach out to me, superintendent.
I already have my name because remember you mailed seven different.
See, see those facilities that you're in.
Everything you're saying is false.
No.
Yes, it is, I can prove it to you.
Everybody here can live on that. Amy, I, I have a question in regards to, uh, the security uploads that, that will go into the singular facility. Can you tell a little about that, or something?
Sure, um. So, um, because we're creating new, two new, um, office areas, we create two new secure entries that would force visitors to come in through a secure vestibule prior to. Oh, it's still on. Um, so we create two new secure entries. So visitors will be forced through a secure vestibule prior to entering the school. Where we're doing renovations, we would do our best to compartmentalize. In the new wing of the school, there would be several layers of compartmentalization from the entry to the actual instructional classroom itself. So we're able to do the most where there's new construction and where there's renovation, we'll do our best possible in terms of further compartmentalizing the space to provide their, um, free access like it is currently.
And the number of extra doors?
So now that, yeah, so now that we are, um, really consolidating entry to two primary access points for students and students will not be traveling back and forth to a different camp, campus. The whole, um, premise right now, where students pull open doors for other students, um, will be severely eliminated or severely restricted if not eliminated in terms of security. So, uh, yeah, it's really reducing the number of entry and exit points. We, we can't reduce the number of exits, but we can reduce the number of entry points, um, and then making those secure entries.
Just want to bring up something, you know, in the beginning, we said, oh, this was designed to prove against that ones. Um, I kind of consider myself as one who has entered the world of the one, not the lead. And in the past, we've even talked about if it fails and it costs over a hundred thousand dollars, we just mix the pool all together. And now our C is back in here and I can see going to a referendum. And, you know, we have like factions, we have the pool people, the swim team, and, you know, the lake country swim. You know, I understand that they're very passionate about it, but we also have the auditorium, the theater groups and things like that. And when some of these people hear, oh, they're not doing anything with auditorium, but the pool's getting renovated. I think that's going to turn off a few voters to the referendum.
Nowhere near as many as you'll turn off, but there's no pool. That, there's the single, the group that did the most support was the pool people. Waiting for this.
They're waiting for us.
Yeah, because if we, if the, if our community supports our renovations, our pool, but I don't see the village needing a pool.
The village, you know, maybe.
It wouldn't be an age lane competitive, it would be what we'd be doing.
No, I, I, no idea.
Yeah. Sounds a bit tentative, sounds a bit of a survey since like we fall. They're very serious, yeah. They're not too far away, big amenities, a lot of kids out of our district, they just went over to.
Do we think that? Don't think we can build a new stadium for ten thousand dollars? I should take everybody a question, we can't build a new pool for ten thousand dollars? How would we renovate?
This is more important, but.
Yeah, you're saving on, on structure.
How should they come?
Well, it depends on what you're going for. So Moschigo, Moschigo did this exact scenario in twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen across, by one point, nine dollars, in construction. From what we saw, so. They, they took this approach to take their pool offline, renovate it.
If I remember correctly, didn't Rainmaker, uh, give us a call maybe twenty years ago, I thought he was called. He was closing down.
They have three different options from the north and the back, they may go forward, they may go to the access to the, to the cost.
So I think that, that one of the options that's been on the table.
It's six point two million and that was just two and a half years ago. I apologize for interrupting. Again, one of the options available.
I think if I remember correctly, the new pool was like twenty-two, it was not cheap. It was at least double, maybe two and a half times the standard. I think it was quite a significant amount.
Did you remember the pool, it was on a survey?
Yeah, the one, the pool we had on the twenty-sixty was around twenty million.
Twenty, some, twenty-one million.
So that was going to have more seating than this allowed, so.
And separate dining.
Right. So this is really the most, this is the most cost effective way to get us better function.
What do you do during the, about four years of construction for safety, some specific issue that you addressed? So are there any other more questions or comments?
Is, I, I just have a quick comment, I, I'm just seeing the potential with that courtyard, especially with what you were stating and some opportunity for classes that don't exist here that could be really good. Uh, some egg classes and some potential opportunities where there could be some new learning that don't throw me out.
Well, and on that, Chris, if I'm, if I could ask, and I think you touched on it, um, did you talk about the possibility for, potential for, um, expansion? You know, if the number of students, um, increases and, you know, how that is.
Yeah, we always design for future flexibility. So while this floor plan is not established right now, we would design for either horizontal or vertical expansion depending on, you know, projected demands, what we're looking at, but that would be something that we would evaluate as we, as a process evolve.
So as, as this design is right here, um, what would, um, you say is the maximum for those students? And this would really be for?
The addition itself? You hold the maximum?
Total.
I, I, I think it's around twenty-three hundred maximum.
Joe, what do you mean your projection? Hey, what that was? You did some, you ran some projections, so, but, um, rolling over the next day. I don't remember seeing twenty-three hundred on that. At all. I know there was going to be. I know there was gonna be potentially more of a proposed debt because of aging population changes, et cetera, in the state. But then I thought you had said we had a discipline, perhaps a future update. But I don't remember that number ever hitting even twenty-three.
It'll change every year.
It's a projection item.
It's a projection. Uh, we, the projection, the last one done showed us is that for the next three years, we'll drop to around eighteen hundred before we start to go.
I've got, yeah.
So and we got the elementary, some of the elementary schools that's in growth at the younger grade levels right now. But Jeff, the middle elementary is true.
Jeff, when you do the projections, is that based on factoring out open enrollment? Or do you have, you know?
It's based on a hundred people everywhere. It's fixed on attrition rates. So take the kindergarten through eighth grade numbers. We have those and it's, it's, this is a pretty reliable prediction. Uh, in the eighth graders, generally we see an increase of whatever's in eighth grade today. Next year will be that plus about forty to fifty kids. Okay, that's what I'm saying. That freshman class into the sophomore class generally stays within coming to five kids. Doesn't change that much.
Okay.
You know, but being a little punk coming out of eighth grade, probably some private school visit, might insert in the public school if it's only K D private, that type of thing. So it, it's based on the attrition rates. How many kids survive from one grade level to the next year over a year? And, uh, it adds to that. That's what comes out of the prediction. So those are the totals enrolled at the feeder schools, so that would include the early kids? Correct. Cause the vast majority of them do come here, understand.
Yep. And so given some of the internal white space, that is non-renovated classroom space, which we've seen, some of those are pretty small classrooms. Over time, if we were to take on small projects where we would take on a wall or put in a space and convert, and maybe out of the three classrooms, we'd end up with two classrooms, for instance. Would we have additional space put into the new building? To still accommodate that type of approach to treatment of, of non-renovated classrooms?
Yeah, you do have the capacity, given obviously what we just discussed, but the additional capacity that this offers, you would have the space to be able to do that. And then, you know, if, if you reduced enough that you needed to add on more, we would design it such that you could add on in the future if that was a habit of age, you wouldn't necessarily need to do that given this case.
Any other questions? Um, the only other thing I was trying to ask was, uh, with this plan, um, how did parking settle out? Um, because I know the previous plan that there was significant additional parking that became available for student parking. I'm aware. What about this, my hundred of numbers shooting up?
I don't have the exact numbers, I can, we can follow up to the next one if you're mad. But we, the student parking developed is enough to accommodate what's being displaced or settled off. Not as much as the previous, just because of the angle of the building on the side, it's not as efficient as the previous options, so it's gonna be kind of where it was like that. It's like, but, um, there's sufficient parking to accommodate in the new northern lot.
Just ask for any more, but any big requirements or some contract for these four restrictions? Is it, do you need restrictions on subcontractors?
Uh, we, we prequalify contractors, make sure that we follow them. So as we're, as, as, as we talked earlier about the fit packages, that'll be identified, you know, so like there'll be a contract package for classic lighting, for concrete, for HVAC, electrical and whatnot. There's typical project at this side would have anywhere from probably from forty to fifty-five different packages, I believe, so identify them so to get the most feedback of that. And then, then we'll do, uh, pre-qualification, make sure that they handle, um, the project size-wise, manpower-wise, and then, you know, and then the, the time and capacity goes. Their financial balance sheet, pre-qualification, sure, it's hard and solid. And since cold, since COVID, I mean, in the past, I mean, we would probably do like a financial check with self, you know, you know, with their subcontractors through, maybe every two or three years. We, we made it point out every year we do a financial background check because it changes with all the work going on. Contracting different table, you know, on corporate better, uh, increase, you know, increasing their risk of, of actually completing the project, so.
And has the administration given any thoughts with security for the whole, security is up. Our facilities?
No.
Do you plan to work on it?
Uh, we're hoping to get a new building, so if we had a new school, we certainly didn't think there'd be any reason to do one. Uh, we're a little hesitant about doing one because we already know there's security issues. I'm not sure what we would gain and if the money spent would give us anything that we already know. We know we've got a lot more entry points than anywhere else. We know we've got old buildings. We're a unique situation with kids traveling back and forth so many times during the day. You know, we know what risks are associated with that, so we have just never really seriously looked at it. We didn't think it would get us enough return, but if the board wants us to look at that, it's certainly something we can do.
I personally think that, you know, it's on the help, cause coming from an expert to say that there is a big security issue here. That would be.
Yeah, I mean, again, if the, if another referendum were to be successful and we ultimately know we're getting under one roof, I don't know if, again, if it'd be worth an analysis on structures that are gonna look completely different in the near future.
I was saying, if we rethink a security assessment, say that this current facility, not your campuses, constitute barriers. Security expert, and then made an assessment, whole of this campus isn't safe. I think it would make the case for a referendum a lot better.
If the board wants us to go in that direction, well, the board decides.
Are you suggesting that, that we got separate from the referendum? Uh, which we're just like now, or is it an interim step to make sure that we, we address any safety concerns during the building process or what direction?
No, not during the building, I, I just wanna reassure that our public, our constituents that we think of the safety issue right now is security issue. Partnering partners.
Yes. Um, and gee, what kind of a class, like do you know of?
Opening, someone would do it for long. Or the safety of our students and everything like that.
Is there, is there an opportunity to work with our SRO to see if there's something through the sheriffs department that they would be willing to come out and do something just to give us some solid information with regard to? So you can ask them, I don't know what kind of services are provided that we can ask. I, I can tell you if any expert says we don't have a security problem, I don't agree with them. So if people aren't convinced by the current set of things, I'm not sure experts can convince them either personally.
That would certainly affect that someone can give, charge yourself security equipment.
Going through the sheriff. Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely ask them.
I think that makes sense to some degree to have some type of, uh, I find it possible, uh, a way to address safety concerns that might be there during this interim between now and potentially that kind of thing consolidated. I don't know what that looks like. Maybe it's achievable for the sheriff's department. I don't know what it gives. Impacts our ability to cope with this, but I think it certainly would, but substantiation. Boy, has been our long-term concern, uh, for security purposes. So that makes sense to others, I don't know what thoughts are. Can we do these things in tandem? Question, I, I have to think that the new school would need to be built where that school, renovation, expansion, would be done for a series of years. So to have securities that's been done, because we need to protect our students now. You know, and that happened earlier this week, that last week, and then, no, that last week. And these kids were scared out of their mind. So, you know, maybe even helping in that capacity of, hey, you know what? Actually, this is the concern, so we're gonna address them all the more. Hopefully expanding and renovating more camps.
Yeah, I think if there's a way to have, have the sheriff, just like a fire inspector would come in and say, okay, this, this area is insane because of, you know, there's not two exits, you're not, you know. So just to, just to kind of have that solidification as long as it's not something that would, uh, be a, a cost that's gonna be created, that does that, that's, uh, could do okay there. Basically, as you were saying. Also for law.
Can we propose that then, uh, uh, member Miller, who, that validate G? To, to assess a process that would allow the campus to, uh, make steps with part line up?
Hasn't put it up to me.
And that occurred, you would be okay with that as well as chair. We're working to merge. I think that sounds reasonable and could play that sort of agenda. We, we probably might run through that.
We could leave that finished, so we can change the building part of them.
I think we, she wants to speak to her constituents. Uh, so we had a, like, just an initial first time touch base with admin, um, uh, President Stewart and myself just recently. Just to kind of start talking about potential partnerships. It was real pie in the sky, real just kind of big idea, um, you know. Your discussion of, you know, pool and their discussion of pool was also, you know, just something that was floated out there, um, it's like a, a brainstorm session. Just to talk about different things that they're looking at doing, different things that we're looking at doing, potential partnerships. I think there's going to be more to come. I do think admin, um, Karen, uh, Russ, that was there, I think the next steps will come after we have resolution on this one year. And then an opportunity to talk about it. But it's not, there's nothing really solid yet at this point, it's just like the first, like, point of view there. But I think it's, it's gonna be durable, so if we don't do a rule, we may do. Not, no guarantee, it's just a discussion, just all brainstorm.
There, there is nothing, uh, there was not a set stuff. Uh, not in terms of, uh, projecting timeframe, that cost, uh, even the impact of, uh, like, uh, for some type of acquired facility. Helpful place. So, uh, with a bit of that. At first. So at, at some point, I, I think we can move on with those things that are all under one roof, um, and that's been just our, our students. So we obviously have an option on the table here. And clearly it follows our, our original process design. Where we listened to a number of data points, one of those we, that per the survey, sixty-three percent of respondents wanted us under one roof. They did not support what they see to build it. And another data point, I think that's a good one, was to keep in mind that while we put two hundred and sixty-one million in public there to the public. And clearly, we received response and we're listening and we're responding to that, it was a no. It was a big yes. But we received toward ten thousand positive votes. That's a huge, that's a huge number. Ten thousand people wanted a consolidated building and were willing in fact to spend two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to build it. So on some level, not to listen to those people is a service to them as well. So we have, there are these data points. We don't know what the magic number is for tax tolerance, there are completely. I dare say that referendum becomes the proof. We have information, we make decisions, we propose something. The tool being the referendum itself. And the referendum, I think, is just a great democratic process. We make an educated proposal. The voters will hold, the voters will tell us whether they would tolerate the next proposal for us. And if they don't tolerate it, well, then we'll be back to the trial for once again. This may respond, yes, we are not. So I propose that we seriously take into consideration this new rendition for consolidated option. But again, addresses security needs of our kids and our staff. Provides enhanced educational environment for our kids. It's everybody under one roof, but I think is really also follows what I'm hearing from administration. What we have to offer from the administration in terms of their reputation. They want our school under one roof. It will help with not only safety, but communications, um, a number of different things. We didn't do them all. So I would like to just take a, a rough poll of board members and get a sense of what support there is for following the next step in testing the tax tolerance through referendum.
And I apologize for being late, I really can't, and I missed our presentation, so.
Of course.
So the key questions that I had were, what is to do the renovation? How long of a process is it? How many years are we?
You can go back to that slide for, sorry, Gerald, I.
No, that's. Lee, you said you would be.
Yeah.
Ready for students twenty-eight, twenty-nine, so we're.
But we would start construction in the spring of, uh, twenty-six. It'll die soon. And, uh, and then, uh, and then summer of twenty-eight. And that, that all we would be taking out, uh, you know, the, so it's. In the year. So it'll be, it'll be over after the twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Until that point, we're gonna have, we're gonna keep our old campuses online, uh, or we'll be online during the structure.
In the price tag, I thought I saw a slide, it was a twenty.
There's a range.
One thirty dollars with one forty.
Or thirty, one thirty-seven.
Well, there is a.
or there is a
The reason for the range is that it's so little time. It's recent, two or three weeks to arrive at this. We're committing to being within this range. If the board chooses to go forward.
Do you need to see the tax impact slides?
Yeah, the tax impact. So like the average household was one, uh, just under a thousand dollars for the two sixty. So this one would probably be about six hundred.
The hundred thirty-five million is a dollar and one penny. And the hundred forty million is a dollar five. So the range is going to be somewhere in there. And those aren't exactly aligned with the range that we gave you, but it gives you a good ballpark.
So I think we had determined with the last referendum that our average home for our district is somewhere at four sixty, something or other range. Roughly at, you know, a couple. Whereas last time, and we were under a thousand dollars here on that. Roughly at, uh, somewhere between five, five hundred five and five hundred. For this option. Anything else we can kind of go on to, what do we do?
Yeah, I mean, the one thing is, I'm just curious, you know, if, if the referendum doesn't pass, what's the impact? Can the budget be tolerated? What do we cut? Or are we okay financially or?
Is it going to be cut the programs or?
We can operate, we'll just have two facilities to make. And then we have to decide. We're going to have, we've got a facility plan that says we should spend. And we have to go with the numbers up to ten, probably the first three years, I think. You know.
Three years, thirty.
So in the next phase, the community said they don't want to go to one building. And we know we are in two buildings for as long as I'll be here.
Or we'll have to decide, can we go for some kind of an operational referendum, maybe change your facilities or, uh, different capital to maintain two facilities or some combination? Now we have to wait a whole other year before that could be brought to an end. So this, this is the only way to get under one roof. So if this one doesn't pass, I think the idea of getting under one roof goes by the wayside. You can't do it for less than this.
I thought the pool was around nine to ten million dollars. Because I know in the original referendum, it was a bigger price table. It's the trade-offs that we're doing.
You don't get a separate diving well. You don't get more seating. I'm sure the other amenities, amenities, locker room and that won't be as extensive. This basically gives us a new eight lane, a better pool with a diving well on one end of the pool. Not a certain Yeah, this takes care of this.
And Gerald, the, the blue, the flat water plant on north, yeah, the blue where the current pool is signifies heavy gravitation of it. That little orange extension, it represents an addition. To satisfy that, that, that eight lane pool type of capacity that's for renovating place and by a small addition to the economy. I know in the brand maker, just like with the air quality and stuff, is that accounted for in the, in the dollar figure?
The other compromise is obviously you'd be out of the pool for duration of construction of the renovation.
In the theater, pretty much, we're saying that's not, not touching it, but there might be potential to save. There was a magic donor out there.
One of the spots along with them.
There's space to be. The white areas on the smart land are correct.
So in short, what's being renovated are the spaces that need to get combined from north and south. So for example, the cafeteria needs to get expanded, the library, tech ed, face, main offices. All needs to essentially double to accommodate crowds coming over. And then the large orange additions, they keep all of these linked classrooms. So, um, all the classrooms. And that total reduction in quantity of classrooms because of the efficiency now of one building. So that's completely gone down in size. And then the large addition, just to the north of the west gym, is a normal fine purpose facility that accommodates all the five ed spaces potentially at south, adding out to, to north to accommodate those.
And that's new space.
That's new space, yeah.
And again, you guys can't emphasize enough. The referendum is literally it's, it's a proposal. It's just a test to the community, see what they want to do. If they support it, if they support it, if they don't, they don't. We will carry on and move on from there if they do not support it. The data points we have suggest strongly that this is what people want. And we don't prove one number out and some point, uh, to go back with a second proposal seems in order.
Which is very common.
Yes.
Very, very normal to have one fail and come back out. It's no, it's normal in early. I think there was one time it took four tries, I consider. I wouldn't recommend doing that in this case. I think, like I said, this is the last time we're going to get under one roof.
This proposal accomplishes what we initially identified as the issues. And it does it for a fraction of us, even, even when we're talking on seventeen at one point. And we got this down to lowest cost. Now we're not touching any space. But we're, we're touching proportions. It accomplishes what we set out to do back when we did the whole facility setup. And it's starting to start to keep running into the two buildings. The first five years, I think, it's up there at five hundred dollars. For the first five years, that would be necessary.
Well, I, I thought I would say this.
We didn't have one more slide here, and that was if you decide to go forward, just a key days. First of all, we're drawing the range, like I said, that needs to be dialed into a number. Uh, we'll point to there. Valid resolutions need to occur no later than January twentieth. You know, January eighth, you have a board meeting, I believe, regularly scheduled. And then if, if the board adopts, um, doing a similar process, communicating with the engagement, making sure the community knows what, what is the referendum right? They don't want to look.
Investigation, security. Everyone black, black, well. I think parallel conversation. Any further discussion, because I think we're just, uh, one of the show of hands, uh, to pull it.
I just think that it's, I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's kind of interesting. I mean, if you, we just passed an operational referendum. It was two million dollars a year. Yeah, I know it's only four years, right? Four years?
What's going on?
Okay, I'm rolling up slightly, but if we, we're sorry. If we, if we amortize that out for, for twenty years, that's nineteen million.
Twenty years?
Twenty years.
Like it's only for four.
I know, but if we did it for twenty, yeah. Am I right? Two million times, well, no, that's actually, that's forty, sorry, that's forty, thirty-eight. All right? So thirty-eight million.
Thirty-eight.
Okay, so thirty-eight million, if we continue to do that every four years. The savings of getting two buildings under one roof, we're saving a million dollars right there off the bat by not having due location services. There's another twenty million.
A little bit less. We would give four million, don't get this.
Okay. So if you, you know, amortizing that out for twenty years, there's another, oh, eighteen million. So now you're getting close to fifty-five, sixty-nine. Just for those two little pieces and nothing's changed. Think uh, to Kim's point, I, I personally think it's worthwhile sending this to the community to have them tell us, as we have for everything else, what they want to do. What their tax tolerance is. I think, uh, at some point, as a community, we have, we're also responsible as a board to be visionaries. For the school as an explored future. To be future thinking. So I think there's a lot of pieces to this. I think that, uh, the groups that we have put to this task have done, come back with a great renovation of, of how we can create, look at this in a different way. I think that's really impressive. I don't know what our community is going to do. I do know personally myself, for the first go around that I was against it because the community was. But I think without time, uh, to do another, another survey, to understand where their head is, I think the right way to approach this is still, still by the book. So I think, I think it's, I think it's in our best interest as a board to approach this in a united way. And say, hey, we, we believe in this, we believe in our community, we believe in the future, we've really called this down. This is an opportunity, uh, to be future thinking. And, and to take our, our families in that we're one of those who operate as
Remember, that's it. Where are you at?
I, I think this is the ultimate survey. I think it's the ultimate survey. Talked about a survey earlier. This is, this is how you find out what the community wants. I agree with Conrad that this is the best last attempt to find out, do they value everyone under one roof or not? If they do, they'll say yes. Uh, we, 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 I didn't do anything they could uh, to reduce the financial effect of it significantly. To achieve those confidence that Jeff had mentioned earlier from the study. So I think this is the best way to find out, not just the tolerance, but what do they, this is part, what is the vision for the community? What do they want? Do they want one arrowhead, one campus, one? Or not? Just like if I'm not, you send a survey out, you're going to get handful of that that are personally vested and interested in it. And maybe some others that just have zero tax costs. This is the way you find out. So whether I like it or not, doesn't matter. I like the process. Does that help?
Yes. And you have comments, six-year-old. You know, all of that. I don't know. Oh, boy. I was just going to go for this one. I like everything that everybody has said, and I appreciate the hard words it's on. It's just, um, very nice plan. This is wants and needs and I know a lot of people in our community and even the prices by this, you know, if it was a five hundred thousand dollar home, it would get a thousand dollars here initially. And you got a job. Now it's still going to be five hundred here for the test issue with the community. And a lot of older people in our community, I know they can't afford it. Um, we've got two other referendums to pass on. Like, and they're already paying, uh, their taxes. I'd like to see this. It might hurt. And looking back at the, um, referendum that did pass, there's seventy-two cents on the value one, that passed by only four hundred votes. So I just, I don't feel right about this. As a representative of the taxpayers also, I, I'd have to be acknowledged. Yeah, I, like, I really need to think about that. I do believe in everything that everyone has shared so far. I think are saying things sometimes that we don't necessarily have the proof point to back those statements up. I think that's a problem. Because it shows a lack of follow-through on our part. I have a feeling that there's so much angst right now in the community that I don't want to appear tone deaf, but at the same time, I truly believe in the future of Gerald had, having a child here right now and a future child coming in. Yeah. And I mean, the democratic process, they will tell us. I just wonder if it doesn't pass. Then what's up? Do we have enough time to tell the community what these plans are? Pretty helpful. For them to be able to understand and that we're not just toll-voting and press, we have to put these out there. So there's like a lot of pros and cons going on in my head right now, and I'm trying to figure out which one for these, like, we use more than the other. But I mean, we're just throwing it out and they, well, let's take, let's, let's test the waters here and see what they're going to say. I feel like you're darned if you do with the darned, Gerald. This is my, well. I hope that we can communicate more effectively this time. As a community. And so, here's the one thing that I'm say, but I really think we need to have a a good communication plan here. I did engagement, I can I know we can make talk rooms. I can hear the voices, allow us. Should be solved. As we forward. And really make sure that people understand what we're trying to do with that. We're not just trying to bring this down and help because we have one opportunity left and then we have to create a third. So if it doesn't pass, then it's like, okay, well, no matter what, we have to come back to the twenty-twenty-six, like, we have to do that. And will we have that much time to build the cadence of this? Why would we do it, you know? But you have a little short. In a nutshell, we can go and test the waters and see what happens in the fall. By looking at all of the history. I will be, will be interested to do a present. Do that, you said.
And I just have to respectfully ask that we hide these faces like we have, so we don't anyone's throw it, because that is just the hardest thing from any one's mentality, mindset, intent. We, we have worked so hard to get information out to the community. But I think the hours and hours and hours that were given out so that our community could get as much information as possible. So our intent was people could have everything they needed to know to make an educated, uh, valid decision. That's not rounding anything down anything. So you, we were simply providing information.
Perception is reality, right? So
I don't know if it is in this case.
There were fourteen people that said, no, you should have them out, which I hear, I hear loud and clear.
Yeah, that's exactly the process.
Saying they didn't feel informed. So that's what I'm saying, the second time go around, our communication, our key talking points, they need to be spot on. We need to provide people with clarity of information. Safety and security assessment is a problem. I would have thought y'all would have done that, but I so here I'm like, yeah, safety is an issue, but really we, we have no proof points to say that. So I really commend for, for Miller for bringing that up. I just know that if we don't go properly and thoughtically into this, it will be perceived that we are trying to rush for an able verse hold. So I just, that's, that's my only thing. And I apologize for using words, ram, ramming down people's throats, but people need time to adjust information. And I apologize for using words, ram, ramming down people's throats, but people need time to adjust information. And it clearly didn't have enough time to get out and adjust insulation from the last referendum. So we, we now have a shorter time to say, hey, these are what the new plans are and this is what we're backing it up with to get to where we're going in three and a half months. I appreciate you, I'm sorry. This, this is where it gets to be between a rock and a hard place, right? Because when you go to that one. And it fails. You're strongly advised without their junior is at least as top of mind in the community. Community goes first, action takes a big, on the spectrum over a period. If to some degree, they might even be anticipating the second round. If you wait. It's almost like starting a hurricane and you force any momentum that you might have had. And all of your costs. Become inflated. Uh, postponing to function. So it is a, it's a, I understand what you're saying. It's a very difficult process, but, um, I'm very hopeful that we will be able to, uh, get onto communications and develop very point on messaging like you're suggesting. And, uh, and if we do those, hopefully it's likely what it done last time. I think there were some good chickens with fingers and. But heaven knows. There were so many opportunities for touch points. And the school and off-site all over the place where people are probably used to be taught. So I guess we'll. So I think potentially.
I can give kindness with a few caveats, but I'm sure this probably. Everybody go off. You know, just from an overall kind of openness and transparency perspective, we need to do better with. And all the cost assumptions, errors of the schools. We just need to be, I won't say with the word transparent, but just be ready, waiting for transparency to come along. Having that on that. And I think for us. I think that ties a lot back to, you're talking about education, we need to reach. We got to fire whoever is that public health. Taking them. We got to take it completely different from what we're sure we are being, because we're. And it wasn't because God didn't try. It's the hours, hours, you know, it's a gravity of something. Because you can't, you know, about doing what you did last time, it just didn't work. We got to rethink the community contribution. And, you know, at the end of the day. If you do it trans, they need to see what it looks like, feel the new concept of here. Seems to be something that God sees, deal and understand what the impact is on the community long term. About that, it's just the school board, the administration is doing whatever else does, they're just trying to get this thing. Just communities go deeper. There's a lot more detail that we need to get behind and be more transparent about it. Like I said, I couldn't get behind it, I did it, but. Might need to. Get a little more in the weeds.
When you're in the weeds, we went.
You said, and you know, lots of support, you said you've never been who's part of, you've never seen a board this involved, this, because you guys are the same. Are. As part of the community. So. Guess that's the expectation for it.
I don't, I, I, as, as somebody who was giving those presentations night after night, I, I can't agree that there was any lack of transparency. We shared everything and, and, and we could. Yeah, I had an awesome, I think the issue is, and this is not an usual Arrowhead. We have a huge number of people in the community who don't have kids in school and are not connected to the schools. They're not reading brochures, they're not coming to presentations, they're simply not connected. And that's the group that said no. And every, every district has them, you know, where their populations are such that roughly thirty percent have kids in school and seventy percent don't. And I don't think anybody's got the magic answer to how you get those people engaged, because that is a hard, hard reach. Ten thousand people saying yes to the single biggest high school asked ever in the history of the state? That's not a small number. And all the communication was done up to this point, this is just built on that. Because everything we've talked about, that the problems that exist, that nothing's changed there. So that communication's been out for over a year, that anybody and everybody that wanted to know about it. Anybody that voted, I mean, now we know twenty-four thousand people voted, so they at least know something about, there's a referendum, there's a facility thing, so people can't claim ignorance. I'm totally fine if we want to try a different strategy, I'm not exactly sure what that looks like.
Well, let's start, let's start here, where, where do you guys think? Just from your, your perspective. Where, where do we miss the mark? Where do we improve them most?
I don't know that we missed much, we had over three dozen people tell us they changed their mind when they saw the presentation. Unfortunately, a fraction, a tiny percentage of people saw the presentation. And I don't, I mean, we went to the homes, we did it at all the, uh, feeder schools, we did four or five nights here. Uh, we had everything on the website you could possibly ever want on the website. So I don't have a good answer for how to get to those people that would not see a presentation otherwise. I'm not so sure the gigantic turnout at this election didn't play a huge role in this. And that alone could be a huge factor in the difference between November and April.
So you haven't identified anything that I'd like to improve?
I would love to be able to get to the seventy percent that would not come out, don't read the brochures, didn't respond to all the invitations to come to the information sessions, I don't know how to get those people to come out. I've never done an outreach where you went to so many people's homes and did presentations, I've never done that. I have, I have never went to a home before in my life, this is the first time I've done that. And I don't know how many homes and groups we went to, we had to double, well into double digits. That kind of outreach I've never heard of, and most people were talking to people in the outreach and other people, and sometimes that led to another invitation to present. I've never worked at District that did that much outreach, Brandon. And yeah, in this community, it still wasn't close to enough. I don't think that's a criticism of what we were doing. I think it's a reflection of the November turnout and the fact that we have seventy percent people without kids in the system. And that is a hard, hard reach.
I want to remind, I'm happy to, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I think what you're suggesting that, uh, perhaps, uh, we can pull on board members that have some board member involvement in that communication strategy. Your suggestion there actually pairs very, very nicely. With comments I've heard from members of the community. Who in an effort to provide some feedback, uh, maybe what Mr. Thomas McLevee Moquard. Suggested that. While the information sessions were very humble that were provided through the administration. That in fact, members of the community said. We didn't hear from one of them. Were there a lot of officials? I don't know what that process usually looks like in after school, but I don't know, I, that's my assumption is that we're of rare birth and most other businesses probably don't have a lot of board members very long, but we certainly could entertain that. The board members want to be involved in that communication strategy. And, and, and reaching out, uh, and being a part of that tip with the public. Although we're at one of them. I think board members should. So, you know, maybe. What you're saying is, is in fact, very much in tandem with community feedback. It, it then becomes incumbent on the board to be involved. So that's just a, you know, separate type of commitment that's addressed, uh, to be involved in perhaps some of the communication piece design. The approach and, and the delivery. Right? Board members are, would, are doing that, I, I can't imagine that Conrad and team would object to some of. They were busy every single night of the week all the time. Does, does that kind of satisfy where you're driving things from?
I don't have to do anything over this kind of thing.
And, and I would say one of the biggest differences this turnaround is, it's not two hundred and sixty-one million. It's going to be in the one thirties. And that, despite what one person might have said. I, I don't know how you can argue with the results, clearly it was too big of a number. Just, it was too big. And not surprising, I don't think anybody's surprised by that, especially in this community. But the parents told us originally in the survey results that they wanted that new school, that was absolutely clear from our parents. So we gave the community a chance and the community said no. Coming back with almost half that amount? I don't know if a bigger change you can make, quite honest, like that is a huge, huge tax burden relief compared to the original ask. And it still may be too much. Yes, and that's the only way to find out.
People's landslide, if you don't change your strategy or your ethics.
But that's a huge change going down to the hundred thirties, twenty-six.
All we're saying is it's a number. No, it's the number and it's how we, we need to. It's not just, um, we can't reflect on the fact that people, they may have done something wrong or we need to improve on our tactics.
If I've had, I can't say how many people have told me from other districts, they cannot believe the outreach that we did, like they were shocked. No, no, it's not about wrong, my point is, these other communities are passing referendums doing less than we did. Doing way less. What's the difference? It wasn't two hundred and sixty-one million and a dollar ninety-one on the taxes. I, I would argue that is a significant difference in terms of changing the approach. But I'm totally open to talk a little more on that.
Well, and I think, you know. We're very fortunate on a. You have walking expertise. We have a number of weeks whose area of expertise is communication. Uh, we, we have a number of people with backgrounds that would serve well. To perhaps provide some info into strategy. Uh, maybe there's a better way to bring some of that expertise to bear on the process and the board. Uh, if in fact, we, we have problems with, um, how we presented last, I really want to improve it, well. Uh, perhaps that's a topic we should take on and, and, uh, have the board members weigh in. Um, as to their level of commitment. Contributing. I mean, for that sense. Uh, I certainly from the time I joined the board. To, um, the time of, uh. I was very active in that overview, intending to just about every, you know, uh, involved in terms of our meeting, um, but going to, uh, food schools or going to meetings that's providing us information to, uh, sharing information about the rest of it. And so I consider myself incredibly active in this process. I will commit to doing that again.
Well, I think to, to your point, Brendan, uh, that we had with regards to inspection for safety and, and to bring this to the community. I wonder if we can also bring, you know, have the next B and G slash finance be, you know, not only a discussion of that, but also a, a session. Or to throw out any ideas we possibly can with regards to, okay, what, you know, what's taken, what's taken hard to get, what we've done and what we can maybe do. How we can approach this. Think that it's, it's worthwhile to have that discussion.
I think that's time to evolve. That's a great idea.
I agree, I mean, with the under one roof, but I think, I mean, just the data points that I know, I know, I mean, we just, Chris said, we've passed fifteen point eight for one point nine. Uh, I know I'm a resident in country, I got my tax bill, I may, they received two. And this is the first time I really noticed it, but the February, I, I, okay, my country score below three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the next twenty years. And, you know, that's had talk of the name of it, it's like, oh. This there. You know, with that and, you know, I like seeing the price go down. Um, and again, I apologize, I just come here earlier. But I think it's like one of the things that we really need to look at, I know it was probably painful from November two sixty down to the one forty-three or one thirty-seven of what we were giving out. But I think we don't need to make that ultimate decision till January eighth, but I would like for between now and then, we'll see. Can we sharpen our pencils a little bit more here to look at it? That's very. I think. So I'm for, I for that dollar amount, not a hundred percent for that. Just because I'm like, yes, I do see a need, but we need fifty point one, you know, we need one person vote, one, one more person to vote against that. And can we get to that?
So if I hear you correctly.
I want to continue, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I say we continue the conversations, but I'm not all in favor of one hundred and forty-three million or one thirty-seven. What can we do to look? As may, it may be able, but it may be kind of, is it possible, is it trade-offs, I mean.
That's all we've been asking them.
I, I don't. Pushing and pushing, because I know with the pool, I'm like, you know, it's not like, oh, it's the, you know, the diamonds factor. Like all of that sticks. Uh, you know, you see the athletic facility, you know, for like thirteen. Okay, that nice to have, a must have. Those are the things that I'm just evaluating of, you know, yes, I mean, it is a lot better and more tolerable, but what will it take to get? For it to win?
Yeah.
Because it's like one of the things with Lake Country here, because I am worried about, I am worried about Lake Country because I think they're going for another referendum, because I did get a survey mail, uh, a few weeks ago. Entertaining going to a referendum again. And that's where it kind of mistakes, like I already see two things on a ballot. And, you know, I think sometimes you have to look at the wording of the question. Twenty-sixty million sounds like a hell of a lot of money, because it is. But if you look at it, you know, if it's like, okay, how do you word it, so it's like, what does it mean to that taxpayer? Okay, the average taxpayer is going to pay eight hundred dollars more either. Okay, that seems a little bit more tolerable to more people than this big number of two hundred and sixty dollars. Again, I'm just trying to look at, you know, what can we do, you know, to be transparent to that person looking at that ballot reading that, because it is like, yeah, Jeff Gross would be by our side when we're doing them, I mean, he's very informative in everyone of what this means, but unfortunately, twenty-five thousand people are not going to attend the sessions. So what can we to maybe, maybe to the ballot question, relevant to that tax? Don't know if it's been done before, but. I don't know, I mean, just kind of throwing that out there. And that's stuff we can have a conversation between now and January twenty-first.
Ballot language, there's legal requirements.
Can you do that, can you do that every, in grand, I don't know. Can you do like average household? A high country that was a bad household.
That's part of the communication. Now, and maybe the flyers take a lot ahead of it. But the ballot question itself.
It has the same overall ask.
The overall ask, what the purpose of that ask is for. Essentially, I don't care about. What we use the funds for and how much.
It's what the cost of these.
Tax, what's the total ask, what's the overall, what's? Now you've got the authority, get that out of this to the box. You do those projects that work, listen to the question. But all the rest is more of a communication. What will it need to, uh, each one? That's it there. Unfortunately, we can't put that on the ballot. Unfortunately, we can't put that on the ballot. Yeah, we can't go to the polls and, and explain it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the case, but it is one of those things, because it's like, what does it mean to me?
If we were allowed, I would, I would go and beat every poll. Go right instead of walking. Sorry.
But I think that's just the things, that's where for me, I'm in favor of the one building, but if it's at the right price.
And just to clarify, Darryl, it's not even about like getting to a price. We have to do this right, like if you're gonna get under one roof, what we basically charged our consultants with is what is the minimum amount to get us under one roof and have this thing be functional? So it's not like classes are, you know, spread all over and it's very disparate and it's no rhyme or reason. So it's really like finding what is the lowest possible number? And then you're just asking the community, is this okay? Will you support this? And, and that's how I'm looking at it, it's not trying to sell or ramrod or get to a certain number, it's truly saying, if this community wants us under one roof, this is the most affordable way to do it, does the community want it or not? And that's, that's where we're at. And because many, many, many community members have said they want us to get under one roof. From an administrative standpoint, we know it's the most efficient and the safest way to operate. There's a reason no one else does this. And so I, I just even think about some of the efficiencies that we're not even thinking about, just having all of our administrators under one roof. All day, like the, the things that's gonna enable us to do that we can't do now, just kind of came to me tonight, so. Um, it, it's really kind of simple. Community, do you want this at this price? And if you don't, then we're gonna stay with two buildings.
I think you mentioned the, the billion student model of what else? Oh, yeah. And I've seen it, I've taught in this building with freshmen sophomores. Where do you see a you get them in one place? Adam said, they give them a look, you know, that's all it takes. Now I gotta step in like or is he gonna glorify the most school down? Do you know anything other districts cycling country or one of our referendums?
I, that's the first I heard that anybody was in April, the last I talked
You had to do it the survey past now.
Yeah, I did, the last I talked to him, Darryl, he's, no one was going out in April from the theaters. But maybe something changed. In fact, I've got a meeting this, this week or next week, so I'll, I'll be, I don't know. If they were surveying now, that probably wouldn't be in April, I remember when we did ours, it was six months.
They sent it to me month of November, like the deadline, like right around the ballot, it was like a separate night.
Right, but remember, we did ours like six months in advance of the referendum, so I'm thinking it would be a pretty tight timeframe to take a survey.
The school perception.
What's that?
The school perception.
That's what we did.
That's what we did.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm just, I have no idea when their timing is, but like I can plan out more.
Yes, please.
Uh, just a question for Charlie. So I understand that it's iron, trying to, you know, sharpen the pencils great. But from what I heard and what you presented, Conrad, shared the information, it sounds as if this is the only way to get us under one building. Where it's functionally effective without losing services that we currently have today. I want to make sure the best clear, is that accurate?
Yes.
So we could shave the ten million off, then we won't have a functioning vote over those eight ten million dollars. We could maybe get rid of a courtyard. Lose natural rate and potential program. So again, it's not that the number can't get older, it's just, it's at a point where if you want to stay in one building and maintain existing service and doing it in a logical way that's maintainable over time, this, this is the number. So if the number is not powerful, then I think the question I forgot to ask. What do we do? Keep operating as well as this? I mean, I can squat rockets, I answer, keep going with two campuses. So it's if you want this, this is how to do it. And again, I, I'm the new guy, so forgive me. I just, I'm going off of what I hear, the, the presentations that you have done are amazing. Uh, two other comments you're running. Okay, I, I agree with Mr. Miller as well, the communication of growing the homes, that's amazing, but we check in enough people out. So I don't think it's a question of transparency, I think it's a question of tech, she's no brand. So it's not, it's not that the information wasn't there, it was there. I just think we might need to look at more creative business model, marketing and reaching out. I, I saw the outside before I came into the board, listened to all of the meetings, I got some of the information, I looked at the website, in fact, I lost it, there's so much information there. I truly did, truly, truly. So I think it may be less than, it's not so much transparency as perhaps in our communication style or methodology, I think we could improve that. And then my last comment is again, Darryl brought it up. Oops, sorry. Uh, remember, how we do it here?
We can call it, but I've been called worse.
How we put it with Lake Country. I think that's another reason where regardless of what happens here, it, it may be cool us to increase conversations with the feeder districts. Um, oh gosh, I'm gonna get killed, there's on consolidation car or working together, unification, because I agree that the referendum here, referendum there, referendum, they're not necessarily connected. There's not a clear global strategy. And if the schools were working together better collectively, then the financials might also collectively be more strategic. Right, how we have Lake Country asking for money. We got this one asking for money, we got this one asking for money, but if they were working together, maybe it would be less money. So three totally different topics, I'm sorry, but those are the things that I'm hearing from other people say, those are at least my observation. Sorry.
No, this is a great observation, thank you. Anyone else? It looks like we have a majority proceeding. I really appreciate everybody weighing in. I, I, I can appreciate the power that it gives everyone because we're all trying to be the best stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. And these are tough decisions. Um, nonetheless, I applaud the work that's put, put into, yet one more option for us to consider. And, and I, I, I think it is a very viable option. And I'm very, very proud of our board to come to a majority, uh, in support of proceeding with a referendum for a uh, that would propose this consolidated plan. So from here, I, I'm open to suggestions, I think, in terms of, uh, how do we get down to that very final cover? Um, in my opinion, the things that happen with these final sets of numbers are somewhat very dependent, I think, on administration. You guys live here every day, you breathe here, you work here. And so the fine tuning of that number should come from administration. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it comes with our approval, uh, but I think if you can bring back that final, uh, final number with the final set of inclusions for design. Uh, our board can review those and look to adopt language, they'll keep us on track uh, to twenty, January twentieth date uh, for the ballot language.
You want to shoot for the January eighth board meeting to have that resolution ready? So you don't have to schedule a separate meeting?
That makes sense to me. Uh, Johnson, Johnson Ford. Save with that.
How much do you want on Wednesday night, this Wednesday, as far as update about tonight? Similar presentation, that, that deep?
You know, I, I think a similar presentation would be good and will again, it's recording. Um, and so we can, uh, direct people, you know, to this, this evening, this workshop where all the detail and more that they want. But I think it would be a lot easier as well.
Similar slide, two years in. Do that.
Okay. Anything further from anyone? Again, I thank everybody so much. Lot of effort. And board members at one distribution, everybody, so appreciate. We're going to move on.